Work session on January 11th, 2021. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Gabe, can you use a roll call, please?
Yes, your honor. Counselors Bessie Johnson?
Here.
Kupczynski?
Here.
Novak?
Yeah.
Olson?
Here.
And Smith?
Here.
Counselors present, your honor.
Thank you very much. Gabe, did you have any business from the public come in?
None that I've been notified of.
Okay, I know Jeff, you're up, we're gonna get right to it. Next agenda item is Community Development Department Overview and Planning Work Efforts by Jeff Blain. It's gonna be a verbal and presentation. Jeff, you have the floor.
Thank you, Alex. So we've got, we've got a presentation for you today. There's really no direction that's gonna be needed out of this. This is purely information sharing, so it should be an easy work session. I have five different screens open on two different physical screens. So, and I'm not good at this. So if I pause and stumble, I apologize. I'd much rather be in front of you doing this in person, able to make eye contact and engage with you a little bit better. Personal. I apologize about that, but it's what we have to do. Before we get going, I'll just friendly reminder for everybody to please mute your mics so we don't pick up background noise. And then I will go ahead and get started. Okay, so when I had set this agenda item originally, I was planning on coming and talking to you about the Planning Division, giving you an update on some of the projects that you had asked us to take on over the last couple of years. Talk about what's been concluded, what's underway and those types of things. But in the time since we originally set this, we've had a lot of change. And that's been internal change and also change on council. So we've, we've went a bit of a different direction with our organizational structure. So we now, instead of having a shared Public Works Engineering and Community Development Department, we're now back to being a standalone Community Development Department. And we've had economic development come back home, if you will, to community development. They used to be part of our team and then split off years ago. So now we have three divisions within community development for which there was previously two. And so what we're gonna do is take a bit of a step back. We're gonna talk more broadly about our department on the whole and give you a feel for the type of work that we do and what some of our challenges are that we're working on. And when we talk about economic development, I'm gonna turn things over to Seth Sherry, who most of you are familiar with. And Seth is obviously in charge of our economic development efforts and he can speak much more eloquently about that than I can. And so I will yield to him at the appropriate time here. As Alex said, I should have said at the beginning, my name's Jeff Blain, Counselor Novak. I don't think we've had the pleasure of meeting yet, so welcome. Marilyn and Ray, this is an old hat for you guys in one way or another, so glad to have you here. But familiar faces and Matilda, I look forward to getting to meet with you in person at some point. So, oops, I already messed up. Okay, so. There we go. All right, so. In our Community Development Department, now with three divisions, we have 19 staff working towards achieving multiple goals within the four themes of our strategic plan of great neighborhoods, a safe city, a healthy economy, and effective government. And when you look at the details within our strategic plan, you really see that the work that community development does is just throughout these themes. It's not really efficient to try to summarize all of them in a slide for you. We're ingrained in all of the themes of the strategic plan. And so what we're gonna do today is we're going to talk about each division individually. We'll conclude with planning, which is a little bit longer. As I said at the beginning, that was really the original emphasis of what we were hoping to talk about today. So for now, I'm gonna pause, I'm gonna let Seth talk. And Seth, please tell me when you're ready for each of the slides and I will advance them for you.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Well, good evening, everybody, mayor and counselors. It's nice to be in front of you. I think this is the first time I have this year. I'm pleased to chat with you a little bit and continue to build relationships here. You know, economic development's kind of this funny nebulous term that to different people means wildly different things. And some people love it, some people don't, but everyone thinks that they're a part of it. And so it's kind of fun because it's diverse and varied work. You know, traditionally, we've folks thought of economic development as smokestack chasing. You're just trying to get big corporations to come to your town and build. And while that has a place and a role, that is not the primary thing we do anymore. And so I'm happy to talk to you a little bit about the diversity and what it really means. I think I was fortunate to be trained by mentors who talked about economic development as really wealth creation for your community. And when we think about wealth, we don't think about just finances, but you have all kinds of assets that actually create wealth in a community. Physical assets and infrastructure, built assets, people, all those things. And so we do a lot of work to support really wealth creation for the whole community. Jeff, why don't you go ahead and go to the next slide here? And I'll talk a little bit about what we do with respect to the goals that are found in our city's strategic plan. And I'll give you a few examples of each of these. So the first goal is you'll find in the strategic plan, and I don't have to read these all to you, but with respect to business, just trying to enhance the value and diversity of the economy here by really primarily attracting and retaining our current businesses and looking for opportunities to recruit new businesses where it makes sense. In the next slide, not yet, Jeff, but in the next slide, you'll see a few data points relative to the work that we've done around this. But in the vernacular of economic development professionals, we call this BRNE work or Business Recruitment and Retention, sorry, Business Retention and Expansion work. And this is the day-to-day bread and butter of economic development that's really focused around building relationships with existing or future businesses here. And this requires a lot of interpersonal time, visiting businesses, places of operation, understanding what makes them tick, what opportunities they're pursuing, and what challenges they may be facing as well. It's interesting because I think what you'll find is most of my colleagues around the state view ourselves with some content expertise, no doubt, but really as a resource hub. There are so many different resources that exist to help support problem solve, business growth and expansion that we try to stay abreast of all those things. So as we're aware of challenges or opportunities, we can share those resources readily and connect folks with resources. It would be too much to ask any individual private business owner to run their business, their life, and try to stay abreast of all the resources that exist to help them troubleshoot, problem solve, and take advantage of opportunities. So we do a lot of that. There's also some recruitment work, for sure. The way that we've approached recruitment in my time here and I think before a little bit is thinking about who our existing companies are and staying in close contact with them to identify opportunities for businesses that they may have connections with or aware of, already doing business with, that would make sense to come and co-locate here in the community. What we find is that makes a lot more sense and has a better return on our time investment than doing cold calls to, you know, someone we don't have a relationship with and saying, hey, you should come to Albany for X, Y, or Z reasons. That may work occasionally, but by and large, it's not a real effective recruitment strategy. One great example of this, it's small but neat. As you know, we have a very important, in our biggest job creating sector in general here in Albany is this special metals industry. So these are creating parts and metals for aerospace, space, medical, defense, all those kind of things. Storyed history, a long storied history here in Albany. So recently, we landed a new company about a year and a half ago called Stack Hip, and they play a value-added process in the special metals industry. And in talking with them this last year, they knew of another company who was starting up, who they thought should come here to town. So they connected me with them and that company was interested in coming into Albany. They're called Aeroblast, they're just starting operations this next month. We'll have some more discussion about that together here, I think on February 8th, with them and you, the council. But they also have a value-added role to play in special metals and we're able to work with them. I helped them solve some financing issues that were happening as a startup and made sure to connect them and walk them through the development process here in towns so they could build out their facility to meet our codes and requirements and get off on the right foot here. So a great success story and that's just a really typical style of recruitment that we'd work on. And then I just extend the invitation to you that as you are talking with your constituents and folks in the community to, if, you know, if they have businesses or own businesses and they're experiencing challenges or they know of a growth opportunity, you're always free to connect them with me and my team. The second goal, Jeff, if you just step back, I think we advanced, to do with partnerships and really trying to lead the regional economy here. Albany really is the job seat of the county and a job driver for much of our region here. We make an effort to have a monthly call with our peers around the region, the Lynn and Benton County and Lane region as well, other economic development professionals. We have a standing lunch to share information, have shop talk. And then we're also part of some really key regional membership, our partnership efforts. And I'll just name two of those right now. One, right now Albany is participating with Benton County in a regional EPA Brownfields grant. So this is grant money that we were awarded for working on projects to help prepare lands that may have had historical contamination from, you know, industrial uses or otherwise, to get those things ready to be remediated and redeveloped. That was a $600,000 grant of which we've, we've used, I can't remember if it's on the next slide, but a few hundred thousand dollars of that in Albany. And then the other one is there's a wetlands consortium, which is really important. Our region is trying to be a pilot around the state for thinking about a new way or new ways and more effective ways to approach wetland remediation here. It's a major challenge to our both residential and industrial development in town. Goal three, maintain prosperity. Again, I won't read these things verbatim, but maybe outline a couple of things that we do around this. One, I just remind you that we've completed this major partnership with Lynn Benton Community College on developing their CTE program, Mechatronics, which is designed to respond to industry needs. And I regularly connect businesses with the departments there who work in CTE to connect them with potential employees and also capacity to do research and development for their projects. So that's an amazing resource we have to retain jobs and enhance value here. The other thing we do a lot of is share business development opportunities with existing companies. For example, there's a statewide organization that supports, it's called the Oregon Manufacturing Extension Partnership, and we just spend a lot of time sharing out their resources and other business development resources that exist. And then the last thing I'd say about that is when we think about balancing jobs and housing in town, we've got some big challenges and opportunities in our community long range to think about buildable lands. And Jeff's gonna talk more about that here in future slides, I'm sure. But economic development, we work closely with, of course, the rest of the city. And now as a more formal part of community development, we'll continue that relationship as we think about the keys to unlocking shovel-ready job-creating lands throughout the community. Again, some tricky challenges, but we're up for it, that's for sure. And then the last thing, goal four, gets us to our urban renewal district, CARA, thinking about central Albany and really this mission of revitalizing and creating a readily identifiable core to the community. We'll get more into the weeds on that as we work together at CARA meetings. But I'll just note that one of my team's main jobs has been to help the council and its advisory board make decisions, to help make decisions to help keep the city on track to accomplishing many of the original projects that were identified by the community in the early 2000s when this district was put into place. There was 52 different projects and activities that were identified as wanting to accomplish using that financing tool. And interestingly, we've done many of those. One of the big missing opportunities was looking at waterfront redevelopment. And while we talk about that in a singular term, the waterfront redevelopment project, in actual fact, it comprises about 13 projects that have not yet been accomplished from that original list of projects. So it's important that we continue working together to treat all those equally and work as we can to try to do as much as possible with the remaining spending authority that we have left in the urban renewal district. Jeff, if you go to the next slide, I just have one up there. I think you guys have seen this before, but this is a few highlights just from the last about year and a half or so of work that my team has accomplished. And I'll just reiterate that in economic development, it would be foolish for any single person or entity to claim full responsibility or credit for any one of these things. And I readily recognize that we're a part of a bigger team. And more importantly, it's our private businesses and community members who are really putting their money and livelihoods on the line. And I just respect the heck out of them for doing that and it's an honor to help support them. So in this last year, about a year and a half, the city, through our work, has done some direct financing as a part of bigger development projects to the tune of about 2.7 million, of which that's leveraged to over $30 million in private investment. I think it's actually closer to 33, as I was thinking about it this afternoon a little bit. So huge, huge investments and a really good return on that money. Nearly $300,000 in these brownfield remediation grants that I mentioned earlier that we've been able to make available and publicize to businesses who needed that to acquire new land and develop. There's been a lot of COVID money that's been flying around to help support small businesses. Much of that coming from the federal and state governments that has taken heaps, heaps of work to try to get to our community. Unfortunately, not all that's been deployable because of administrative restrictions and otherwise set by the state. But we did a lot of work to bring that community, the money to the community. Like I mentioned, we've had a couple neat recruitments that were successful this year. And, you know, this is an important one. When I talk about BRNE earlier, we've had well over 200 unique visits where we're actually bringing value to the table. This isn't just a call or an email. This is connecting someone with a resource, helping to problem solve and what have you. And we track that pretty closely through some software in-house, which is nice to have. We've acquired some really key redevelopment sites in the downtown area to help guide and encourage positive revitalization down there. And then, as I mentioned before, this waterfront redevelopment project has the potential to be a huge boon to the community. When you talk to business owners and large corporations who, well, we don't really have any large corporations. When we talk to, by the definition of the SBA, we're almost all small businesses here in town. And when they think about wanting to take folks to a nice restaurant, bring investors in and community members wide who want to live, work, and play here, having a revitalized waterfront where they feel safe, that's active, you know, large events down there. And that really can attract some significant private investment that is sustainable on its own without the need of CARA moving forward. I really feel strongly, this is a great choice that the CARA and ARA boards made to move forward, working on the waterfront as a whole. And with that, Jeff, I'll finish up, if there's not immediate questions. Oh, I guess we have one more slide here, don't we? I might just pause if there's any questions before I tackle this last one.
I have a question.
Sure, Matilda.
You mentioned BRNE. I don't know what that is in reference to. I'm new.
No problem at all. So I was, I think I mentioned earlier in the vernacular of economic development, we call that business retention and expansion work. And that's the breeding of building to retain and grow businesses here.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Good question. Any others? Well, let me just, oh, Counselor Johnson? Mayor Johnson, excuse me. Okay, I misunderstood.
Is there, is there a list of corporations that's been looked at that would fit our footprint, our sustainability, our strategic plan that we want to go after?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think really the first step is understanding what we have in terms of buildable land. Because the last thing you want to do is try to do work to attract someone to come and then have nowhere for them to build. So we just completed this last year. I think, again, Jeff's gonna speak to this a little bit, but pretty comprehensive look at buildable land and some of the barriers to those chunks of land, what we've identified pretty clearly now. So the hard work of laying the groundwork to overcoming those barriers, getting buildable lands in place is underway and will continue to be. And with respect to looking at specific businesses, I really would say the look has been more at sectors specifically and businesses within those sectors. I readily talk with firms about who they're doing business with and who it makes sense to bring here because they do business together and it makes sense to co-locate. In addition to that, Alex, we work very often with the state who has a statewide recruitment program, looking at firms who are interested in coming to Oregon and often respond to requests for information and recruitment efforts to say, we have a chunk of land or the amenities that you're looking for, let's come down and have a conversation. So we do that probably monthly, if not more often.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Seth.
You're welcome.
Counselor Olson has a question.
I'm gonna have to move, I'm gonna have to move on with the presentation here pretty quickly. This is, so if we could try to wrap up Seth after the question.
Sure.
Go ahead, Counselor Olson.
Do you include properties in Millersburg or only properties in Albany?
It's a good question and that gets to our regional coordination, Dick. And so I would not respond personally to a property in Millersburg, but oftentimes when there's a recruitment out there, we'll coordinate responses to say, here's a few options in our region. Because we'd rather land a business here than in Salt Lake or Portland, for that matter. So we do coordinate on those responses.
Well, I'm thinking of business that comes here and we have to pay the various costs, the people they attract. It seems like it would tend to be a negative. So I'd like to see you attract businesses to Albany, not Millersburg.
Well, I'm with you there, that's our priority. So in closing, I'll just show this last slide here. COVID recovery continues. We look forward a little bit at current projects in the future. It's gonna continue to be a real challenge here, particularly around the retail sectors, retail and restaurant. And we'll just do everything we can to bring resources to the table and continue to connect those folks who are struggling with any resources that exist. I mentioned the long-term look at job-creating lands and some, some big hurdles, expensive ones, to open up those lands to make them shovel-ready. And we can talk more about that, another date and detail of what that looks like. And then the last two there. We have ended a partnership with AMDEC for financial reasons as much as anything else, so as Millersburg, and have taken the rest of that work in-house for now. Hopeful that sometime in the future, there'll be a regional effort to centralize economic development and support what we have going on in-house. But for the most part, we do that internally now. And then, again, ongoing opportunities here, which I've touched on with downtown redevelopment and trying to lay the table for some significant private investment there that doesn't need the support of urban renewal dollars. So I'll leave it at that. And I'm always happy to have a one-on-one with you about economic development, questions, concerns that you have. Don't hesitate to reach out. Thanks.
Okay, well, thank you. But I'm thinking that now that the state will not allow us to have a single-family zoning, it may be that most all the new development will go out to Millersburg rather than here. So I may not have to worry about that.
Okay, so thank you, Seth, for talking about economic development. I'm gonna move over to building and the building division. And Jonathan Balchima is our building official. Council heard a presentation from him a few months back. I'll touch on it in a moment here. But he gave a presentation on the state of the building division. So I'm not gonna really get into the heavy details on building. I'll hit some highlights for you. In the building division, we are responsible for building plan review, construction inspection, ADA compliance, code enforcement, and emergency response. What's interesting to know here is that the building division operates based on a delegation of authority from the state of Oregon. So it's actually Albany operating a state program on the state's behalf. And there's a lot of benefits to that. Having a local program facilitates efficient coordination of development oversight for land use, public infrastructure, fire and life safety, and building codes. And so when you, when you think about, we have all these different departments that are responsible for different aspects of responding to and responding to development and working with developers. And it's helpful to have it all under one house, both for ourselves, for coordination of information and programs, but also externally for our customers, having one place to go to to have all their development services fulfilled. And one of the primary missions that the building division is set out to accomplish is to ensure the safety of our community's buildings through compliance with state building code standards. So it's really, public safety is at the forefront of their mission. And one of the things that we, that we want to do, our mission, our objective in delivering these services is to work collaboratively with the development community to facilitate prompt, accurate, and hassle-free reviews and inspections. That's our mission. I'm gonna hit just a couple stats for you, give you a feel for what activity has been like. So what you see on this bar graph is the total number of building and electrical permits that have came in a fiscal year over the last five years. And what you see here is that fiscal year 1920 was pretty much on par with what we've seen over the last five years. We're running right around 30,000 total, or excuse me, 3,000 total permits. When you look at the total number of inspections that our staff conducted, we're slightly higher than the prior four years, but still, we're right in the ballpark of what we've been seeing, running about 10,000 inspections. So all positive signs that development has been pretty steady and sustained. Those are all good things. When you look at new residential development, so this is talking about single-family residential detached homes, so not multifamily apartment-type complexes. Again, pretty steady activity. We're running just shy of 100, we ran just shy of 180 new units last fiscal year. You see, we're kind of bouncing around 160 to 180 over the last four years. On the commercial side, the graph looks a lot more dramatic because truthfully, we don't get the large volume of new commercial projects like you might envision for new single-family residential homes by comparison. So if we get a couple significant projects come in in a year, it looks like we've got this big bump. And that's what you're seeing there in fiscal year 1819 and 1920. If I remember correctly, Jonathan said that this is primarily driven by a large volume of apartment units that were coming in. And so you see this, this, this big bump as a result of things are happening like out in the Timber Ridge area, for example. In the building division, we complete our inspections within 24 hours of request. Our residential plan reviews are completed within 10 business days. We offer customer support Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And there, it's a self-sufficient division. They're self-supported by revenues generated from building permits. So there's no general fund monies, for example, that go to help support the building division. They live on their own, their own means there. And that's, there's actually legal requirements around how revenues in the building division are spent that can only be spent on building division activities. I referenced Jonathan's presentation that he provided back in September. I provided the date here in case any of the new counselors want to go back and look at that for some reason. But the big takeaways from that were, we're continuing to leverage technology. We made some significant We made some significant uh, investments in years prior about uh, things like electronic plan reviews, uh, mobile applications for inspectors so that they can do real-time results out in the field. Uh, technology changes, technology improve improves. We're planning on adapting and improving with the technology as well. We have some new resources that we're deploying in the next month. Uh, that should significantly improve the level of service to our customers. So we're looking forward to to getting that out, out the door. Uh, we recently did a little bit of restructuring with our permit text that that council uh, approved some position changes. Uh, has the added benefit of uh, some improved, we we believe the change will provide opportunities for the permit text to grow in advance. It allows them to to help with more uh, more activities in the building division. So it should help with turnaround times for our customers. And then uh, it also changed how we interacted with the planning division. So it had, has an added benefit of relieving some of the uh, financial implications to planning, which is a general fund uh, department. So all in all, a lot of things, a lot of moving there, but uh, hopefully, uh, end result is a improved customer service at the end of that. And then lastly, uh, as a result of our presentation, uh, council provided us some direction to uh, address work being done uh, without permits. Us especially uh, people who are habitually violating uh, the requirements to get permits. And so we worked through some municipal code amendments uh, with council and uh, that included some uh, updates to how we levy fines. So that's my overview of the building division. I'm gonna switch now to planning. In the planning division, we're responsible for uh, development review, which you can think of as current planning. You'll see that term come up, current planning. Uh, responsible for long-range planning, floodplain management, historic preservation, code enforcement, and the management of the community development block grant program. And our mission and our purpose, uh, one of our primary purposes is to implement the state uh, statewide planning goals. Uh, one of the most important components of that being, how are we going to plan for and manage growth uh, in the, over time? We also um, want to work with our stakeholders, the community, to identify the community's vision and then develop programs, codes, and procedures around that vision to ensure that what's built on the ground actually accomplishes that vision over time. So there we're talking about long-range planning. What is our visioning? And when you turn to the strategic plan and the theme of great neighborhoods, there's really two goals in there that uh, speak uh, significantly to uh, the goals and missions of the planning division. So uh, goal one under this theme in the strategic plan is to create and sustain a city of diverse neighborhoods where residents feel good about them, about where they live. And by extension, it's not just residential neighborhoods. It's our commercial development and our industrial development. How do all of those things um, uh, live and and work together to uh, to accommodate the the broader visions of the community? And then goal three, provide effective stewardship of Albany's significant natural, cultural, and historic resources. A lot of uh, of what we do in community development revolves around that as well. And we're gonna talk about this. I put this here as a mission because it's been a specific focus of ours for several years now. And that's removing barriers while ensuring implementation of community vision. So how can we uh, improve in our code and in our procedures to reduce uh, provide higher level of service, reduce review times, uh, uh, provide clarity, reduce confusion? Where can we make those improvements and still achieve the outcomes that were uh, desired in our, in our visioning efforts? And we've been trying to clean a lot of that stuff up and we'll, we'll talk more about that. Then you see a note here, uh, a thing that's important for you to realize is that the planning division is general fund-supported. Uh, and so uh, as we, we talk about our budget struggles that that we're uh, faced with and we talk about uh, the challenges that uh, different departments are facing. Planning's right there with all those other departments. We're all um, we're all uh, dealing with the same general fund issues. All right, so especially for the new counselors, um, I want you to know upfront, when you're talking about planning and you hear Oregon land use, uh, and you hear those terms, uh, you're really talking about a really complex puzzle. Uh, and and there's all these different pieces that play in. It is uh, typically surrounded with controversy. Uh, when you're talking about property rights and growth management and density and zoning and all these types of things. People are very, very passionate about it and people have very, very uh, have a a wide variety of views on it. And so it's, it's complex and requires a lot of, a lot of patience. Where you're going to be as council, where you're gonna be dealing most of the time, not all of the time, but the majority of the time, you're gonna be at the top of this pyramid. You're gonna be dealing with what we refer to as current planning. So somebody wants to build something on their property. And they're using the development code that we've adopted to help guide them in that development. And that's, so that's what you see all around town. It's all, that's all guided by 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 current planning. That's what you typically have the most public uh, public hearings about and all those types of things. But as I said, we can't uh, forget about the visioning piece or the long-range planning piece. The pieces that inform what goes, what we do in our development code and what ends up being built uh, on individual sites. And so when we're talking about long-range planning, we're talking about the city's comprehensive plan is really where it uh, hits, hits the ground for the, for the city of Albany. But it's really all of these building blocks that get us up to the site development. So when, when you're thinking about what are the rules that we follow? They all start with legislation and the, and the Oregon revised statutes. And then it's the Oregon administrative rules. They tell us uh, how, what rules we have to follow in order to comply with the statute. And that's where our statewide planning goals come out, is all nineteen of them in Oregon administrative rule. Then locally, we adopt a comprehensive plan that said, that sets forth our Albany-specific approach for complying with all those rules and the statewide planning goals. So we have some things that we have to do. But the comprehensive plan helps describe how we're gonna, how we're gonna do it. That's where our uniqueness can start to come in, is in that comprehensive plan. And then the development code is a step further. It takes it, uh, it it says how we're gonna, it puts the the wheels on that bus, if you will, as far as how we're going to implement those visions. And then that's what everybody uses when they come in to develop. So that's uh, kind of an overview of how those building blocks work together. Okay, so in in the planning division, the general services that we provide, land use by statute, they have to be completed within a hundred and twenty days. Uh, we hold weekly pre-application meetings with interested developers. We have a customer service counter. It's not open because of COVID. So we use phones and email uh, to still connect with our customers. But when the counter is open or when we're doing phone or emails, we're, we're able to uh, talk with people who have questions from eight AM to five PM, five days a week. And um, we get about fifty to sixty general inquiries a week in addition to, um, sorry, that's that might be every two weeks. And we get a large volume of uh, of inquiries weekly in addition to the pre-apps. And those inquiries might be just a, something really quick that might be, how tall can my fence be? Or how much is a setback in a given area? Or it might be something that staff ends up working on for hours. It just, it varies. Uh, so there's a significant volume there. And then we're uh, also responsible for manning the planning commission, the landmarks commission, and the community development commission, commission. Looking at some development activity uh, statistics, uh, the, the bars. Um, sorry, counselor Olson, I'm trying to help you here with the colors. The bars that are on the right of each fiscal year are uh, the number of applications and the bars that are on the left of at each fiscal year are pre-application meetings. Uh, or it uh, pre-apple, not, yeah, individual meetings with developers in the pre-application process. And so when you look back, uh, you see last fiscal year, we had a decent amount of actual applications come in the door, right around a hundred and twenty. But our pre-apps were down um, lowest since we've seen in fifteen sixteen. So that might be an indication that next year, we might not see as many applications come in the door as, as we've seen in the, in the prior years. Might make sense due to COVID uh, and what's been happening there. Uh, but we'll just have to wait and see. It's something to keep an eye on. All right, I want to talk a little bit about our, our recent accomplishments. And this is, we're getting to what I was originally wanting to, to uh, check in with council on. And I'm, I'm not gonna go through each of these, but I think it's good for everybody to know that a few years back, we went through an audit process of our code. Uh, there was really widespread frustration in a lot of areas of our code, um, across the board, staff, uh, developers, council, planning commission. And so we sat down, we did an audit, we did public outreach around it, identified areas of code we wanted to work on, and the council and the planning commission set priorities on that. And the way we went and and did a whole lot of work. And so what you see here is a list of all the categories uh, that we were able to chip away at uh, as a result of that code audit and uh, the direction that we got from the camp plant, the planning commission and the city council. So we've, we've checked all those boxes. In addition to that, these are all the other code amendments that we've done over that same period of time. So long list here. Uh, and it's, it's a mixed bag of things that council raised, things that staff raised, planning commission, uh, individual developers, uh, a mix of just small changes, a couple words here or there to provide some clarity to a complete rewrite of Article One, which was weeks and weeks of, uh, which is our administrative and review article. Uh, weeks and weeks of uh, writing code and reading statute and making sure everything uh, lined up. What's, what's interesting to note here is even though some of these might be really small, there's a lot of work required behind them. So we still have to write a staff report. We still have to do notices to DLCD. We still have to hold public hearings at the planning commission and the city council. So even just to change a couple of words, it's a big lift and a, and a lot of work for our staff. So we're, we're pleased to have been able to accomplish all this in addition to the other ones. We talked about long-range planning. Uh, similarly, on the law, on the long-range planning side, we had a work session with council. We talked about uh, how we hadn't uh, really been doing much in that arena for a while, uh, due to budget constraints and uh, some of the gaps that were being created. And 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 council embraced the idea of doing more long-range planning and and redirected some funds to do these studies that are here. So we did the uh, we were able to do available lands inventory, a housing needs analysis, and an economic opportunities analysis. And really, what those boil down to is evaluating the amount of land that you have available to develop, uh, and of what type, of what type. Look at what type of growth you're expecting over the next twenty years, both from a, a, a housing standpoint and an economic standpoint. And evaluate, uh, do you have the right types of land available? Do you have enough land to meet your needs? Uh, and we went through those processes and got them adopted into our comprehensive plan, which you really remember is our, our long-range planning guiding document. We made some other minor improvements in, in that document as well. We were pretty busy in a lot of other areas. Uh, participated in DLCD's rules advisory committee and technical advisory committee for House Bill two thousand and one. We managed a code amendment task force. Uh, this third bullet is all Melissa Anderson. She does all things floodplain for us and she does a very good job at it in addition to um, managing current, current planning projects. So she, because of uh, our code that we have adopted, our procedures that we have in place, and how good a job Melissa does at running that program. We were, she in the past got us upgraded to a cat class five and was recently able to uh, get us to retain that rating. And the benefit there is that people out in the community who have to purchase flood insurance, uh, they're able to get up to a twenty-five percent discount on that flood insurance, just because of the programs that we have and how, how we run them. So kudos to Melissa there. That's a big accomplishment. We secured a couple grants uh, for long-range planning projects uh, like our East High Five Area Plan and uh, House Bill two thousand and one implementation. And then this last bullet I have down here because it's came up a lot during our, our budget discussions about the need to always be looking for efficiencies and figure out where we can, can save money and cut costs, uh, reduce workloads. So we, maybe we don't have to grow as fast from a staffing standpoint. And uh, we've talked a lot about how that needs to be done with all staff, not just management staff. And and honestly, we're doing this all the time because we, we have to kind of live by this. But we spent some time and 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 had a focused discussion with uh, all of our planners. And we identified nineteen areas of potential efficiency improvements, fifteen internal and four external. Uh, the, the external ones being more like uh, information sharing and and um, uh, website interface type things. So we focused more on the, on the internal. Um, you'll see this on the, on the next slide. So things that we currently have in the works, what we talked a lot there about uh, our accomplishments over the last couple of years. So what do we currently have in the works in addition to our um, normal application reviews and those types of things? Uh, we're working on a, on a planning fee evaluation. We've came to council a couple times to talk about planning fees. It's, it's been a good discussion. We've, we've had requests for infernal uh, additional information. Uh, and so we're working on that and that'll come back. Uh, you'll see that in the coming months. We're working on uh, some potential improvements in Article Seven, which is our historic district article. You'll, we'll talk about that in a joint work session with city council and landmarks commission. We're um, uh, don't worry. We're not trying to change outcomes there. We're trying to provide clarity and uh, uh, remove waste and and procedures. And uh, pretty broad support for that when you uh, when you talk to landmarks commission members, staff and users of the code. Uh, we think there's just general cleanup that makes uh, a, a world of difference there without, without impacting outcomes. So we look forward to talking about that. We're working on all of those fifteen staff-identified internal efficiencies. We have our expanding housing options project that we're working on, non-conforming situations, which we're talking about in the work session following this one. Our East High Five Area Plan, we're uh, waiting on the state in order, in order to be able to kick that off. Council has asked us to uh, pursue some annexations on a, on a handful of properties. Those are ready to go. Uh, they're just on hold because of COVID. We want to be able to uh, communicate with people before we, we pursue those types of actions. And we can't do that effectively till we can knock on doors and and sit at tables. And then um, you know, we talked about this organizational shift that, that we're in and and that comes with some physical office changes. It looks like we're having a garage sale over in the community development department. Right now, there's boxes all over the place. And uh, so we're trying to get ourselves back together there. So that's what's underway. When I look at challenges ahead, uh, you know, we have here first reshaping department identity, building our new team. Uh, you know, we've, we've worked closely with Seth and Sophie uh, for years now. We have good relationships there. But we believe there's opportunities with uh, work, you know, having us in the same office space, working more closely together. Uh, and so we're looking to leverage those opportunities as much as we can. So we need to um, we need to sit down and and work on that in the coming months and figure out where, where we're headed. A challenge for us, and this, this isn't a why, this isn't a complaint, this isn't even unique in comparison to other departments. We're all uh, facing some future budget vulnerability. We have a small number of staff. We have a significant workload. We have things that continue to pop up, like uh, legislation that's passed that that had, you know, has a significant workload impact on our staff. Uh, and those, those are challenging. They're hard to absorb, especially during, during these times. And so uh, just like all of our other general fund partners, uh, we're, we're stretched pretty thin and we're, we're committed to continuing to do a good job. Two last bullets here, uh, and then, then some stats for you. We still have significant improvement needed in our comprehensive plan and our development code. Uh, you know, we talked about the, the code audit and all the work we were able to accomplish. Well, there's a whole heck of a lot more work that we need to do. And uh, our next step is to come back to the council and the planning commission. We're gonna again, talk about uh, you know, a code audit type of list of improvements that, that we might be able to make. We're going to again, talk about, you know, a code audit type of list of improvements that, that we might be able to make or evaluate whether we should make or not. And we're going to ask the city council and the planning commission to go through a prioritization process, just like we did before. The nice thing about that is that sets a work plan for our staff. We know what's a priority for you, what you want us to accomplish. And then with whatever resources we end up with, we can start ticking away at those things and, and be moving in the right direction. That's what we did over the last several years, and it was highly effective. And we were able to accomplish a lot. So we've, we want to reset and we want to do that again. And part of that, and I think in addition to that, needed housing is a major topic and a major concern that we as a community are going to have to wrestle with. And that's diversity in types of housing, whether you're thinking about our expanding housing options type projects, that's affordability or how much do different, different types of housing cost? And it's also ownership models. Not everybody wants to own and not everybody wants to rent. And so you need to have a, a supply of both. And so we're going to wrap up here over the next couple of minutes. But what I want to do is share some statistics with you that'll get you thinking about this needed housing topic in all of, in all of these different areas. So this isn't a comprehensive list. This might not even be the most important list of statistics and data to share with you. But it was a grouping of, of data that I thought was meaningful. I can thank Anne Catlin for providing it. She is a wealth of knowledge in this area and she has relationships across the community to help address these types of things. So you'll be hearing and seeing a lot of Anne as we, as we talk through these issues in the future as well. Okay. So a lot of text on this, on this first slide, but just a couple of data points for you. Talking about housing costs, and here specifically rental. In 2018, pre, pre pandemic, obviously, more than 4,000 renter households experienced housing cost burden, which means they're paying 30% or more of their income on housing. About half of those spent between 30 and 50% of their, of their income on housing. In Albany, a household must earn $44,000 per year, I'm rounding obviously, to afford a two-bedroom rental unit at the two, at the 2020 fair market rent of about $1,100. So if you're going to rent a, a, a two-bedroom apartment, 1,100 bucks is, is fair market rent for that, which is like way more than I paid when I was in college. I think it was like 400 bucks for a new two-bedroom unit back in late 90s, early 2000s. And Community Services Consortium has shared with us that about 50% of Oregonians have experienced income or job loss during the pandemic, which has disproportionately impacted persons of color. And then some stats on housing types in Albany, about 70% of the housing stock is detached single-family units. A little less than 10% is attached units such as townhomes or duplexes. And then a little more than 20% is multifamily, so three units or more. Now this slide, if I could get you to focus at the bottom row, this one tells quite a story, I think. When you look here, the, the one that's about 15%, that's a 15% increase in the median household income over the last five years. So over five years, median incomes increased 15%. If you go over a couple of columns, you look at the average home sale price in Lynn County, average home sale price has increased 77%. The two, the two-bedroom fair market rent has increased 37%. So there's obviously some disparity in, in inflation there. But what that tells you is that over the last five years, if people were struggling to afford the housing that, that they needed then, their situation has got a lot worse over the last five years. So this is some information on Section Eight vouchers. And this is a voucher program. It's federally funded. It's administered by local agencies to assist low-income families, elderly and disabled to afford decent, safe and sanitary housing in the private market. And this, just that numbers here really struck me. You have almost 2,000 households in Albany that are on vouchers or on a waiting list for vouchers. That's not insignificant number of people. I mean, obviously you don't want anybody, but those, those were bigger than I thought they were going to be. And then the people that are on the waitlist, this shows that they're mostly waiting for one and two-bedroom, two-bedroom units. Two slides here, and then we're going to be done. I know it's long. Appreciate your patience. This is a slide from our, our long-range planning presentation a little while back. So the data isn't you know, exactly current, but it's pretty darn close. This is a growth, population growth projection for Albany. In 2035, PSU was, was showing we were going to have little couple thousand less than 70,000 in Albany. If you looked at our historic growth rate since the early 90s, we'd be over 70. As you project out to almost 2070, PSU is showing we have a little over 90,000. But if our historic growth rate was to continue, we'd be at almost 100, we'd be over 120,000 people. You know, we're sitting right around 40,000, 54,000 people here. So you're talking about packing in some, some serious volume over, not really that, that long of a, of a timeline if that were to come true. So lastly, we talked about that housing needs analysis that, that council directed some funding to and looking out at what our needs are over the next 20 years. This is a table that summarizes information from it. And it shows a total of, over the next, this is based on the PSU data, not our, not our actual experienced growth rate data, if that were to continue. But we're a little shy of 7,000 units total needed between rental units and, and owner type units. But what's interesting to me is that 20, 30, 45% of the units that are needed, whether they're owner or rental units, they're needed in the low, very low or extremely low income ranges. 45, excuse me, 55% about is in the middle or, or upper range. So you, you really do need a diverse housing supply in order to meet the needs of our current Albany community as well as our future Albany community. So that's what I had for you today. And that's, that's what I was hoping to share with you. Appreciate your patience. We do have another work session that starts in four minutes. So we're not really going to have time for a lot of questions. I, I hope that this got you thinking. And if we have a quick question, I'm happy to, to try to field it. But remember, we also have our council retreat and we won't go over the same information again at the council retreat. So if you have questions that you'd like to talk about at the retreat, please feel free to send them my way, Holly's way, Peter's way, and, and we'll, we'll talk about them during the retreat time.
Thank you, Jeff. Very informative.
Thank you very much, Jeff, for that comprehensive report. I look forward to hearing more data in the future. Since we only have a few minutes, council, would you like to do a business from the council now? Or would you like to hear the city manager's report? Or do the business from the council after the planning session?
Unless something is urgent, could it wait till Wednesday?
Yeah, I'm good.
I don't have anything this evening.
I'd like to ask a good question. Maybe we get the answer on Wednesday if, if it's not available tonight. And that is in the past, we haven't forgiven, but we have delayed payments on businesses and particularly restaurants that have borrowed money from CARA, Forgotten CARA Grants. And I believe the forgiveness is ending up the, at the end of this month, or maybe it's already been past the deadline. And I'm wondering, are we going to continue that on? Because I think it's even tougher for particularly restaurants to continue now than it was previously. So.
Counselor Olson.
Are we going to continue the program?
We have a CARA meeting planned for next, the, on the 20th, that's next Wednesday. I would appreciate you bringing it up at that time. I think it could be discussed then, if that works for you.
Okay. Well, I wanted to prime you for it.
Absolutely. Bring it up. Thanks.
So anybody else, any other councils have something? Everybody's good. I have one thing.
I do have one thing. I just, right before this meeting, had a phone conversation with a very concerned citizen who approached me. Apparently he walks and hikes and takes his dog out along, forgive me, I have my note over there. Something Park, hang on. And it's, basically there were needles and he said not pump pup tents, but very large tents where people are apparently camping. And he said there was all kinds of human waste and filth and garbage and actually vomit and just horrible, it just was awful. And he asked me, he said, is this going to be the way things are in Albany now? Because this is the way things are in Corvallis, and I want to know, you know, how you feel about that. And I said, I am not okay with that. I don't think this is in any way acceptable. And I want you all to be aware of that because I, it needs to be dealt with. And I am not okay with, with large tents or small tents and people urinating and defecating on public areas. And it's not, it's not acceptable. So for future reference, this is something that I want to deal with and I want us to deal with it.
Counselor Novak, can you let us know what park that is?
Yes, sir. Let me get my notes from the other counter.
I got a similar call and he was concerned about Talking Water Gardens.
Yeah, he said it's called the Simpson Trail. Might've been the same gentleman, but I just want you to know that I don't know how everyone else feels, but I, I think that's unacceptable.
Right, thank you.
I, I don't want Albany turning into Corvallis in that, in that respect.
So is that the same person? Sounds like Dick, Councilor Olson?
Sounds like the same person.
Okay. Thank you very much, Peter. You get that note? Did you want to go ahead and go now, Peter? So, or say it to the, ask, ask the next meeting?
Say again your question.
Did you want to go ahead and go now? I might just have one thing.
Well, you can go ahead. I'll, you, you know, you go ahead, Mayor. I'll take care of it next Wednesday.
Okay. So one thing that I had is that one of the things that I've talked, I'm really big on is meeting efficiency. And so I've asked, I would like to ask the staff to go back and we can bring back some suggestions or an idea of a new meeting time. And also steps to make our meetings more efficient. I greatly appreciate that. Peter, you're up. We, we can go ahead and adjourn now and get ready for the next meeting.
Well, just very quickly, the question of vaccination schedules has come up and I, I wanted to pass to everybody that the, the bottom line for vaccination is that we in Lynn County are, are not getting it fast enough. The county's prepared, Lynn County's prepared to administer about 2,000 vaccines each day, but they don't yet have the vaccine to administer. They're working on getting that product with the state. Samaritan Health is partnering with Lynn County to conduct vaccine clinics using the available inventory that they have. And while it's a good sign that those processes are being set up to distribute, it's only still at this point for the, the group one A. And as you know, there's a one B and a one C, and then there's a, a group two as well. The Oregon Health Authority has been saying anticipate mass public vaccination this fall. But Lynn County Public Health is hoping to get that done sooner. The statewide vaccine advisory committee met last week to try to figure out the answer to the question of who comes next? And when do we think it'll happen? And hopefully we'll hear the answers in the near future. And the fire chief, Shane Wooton, has looked all this information up for us. So thanks to him for, for providing this. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Consitz, you had something?
Yes, real quickly, my wife and I had our fourth quote unquote free COVID testing out at the Lynn County Fairgrounds. Highly encourage folks to take advantage of it. They do it on Mondays and Fridays. It, we walked, took us about 10 minutes to drive in and get through it. People just don't seem to be taking advantage of it when, as much as they could. That's all I have.
Anyone else? So.
I'd like to ask Ray, can't those people that test you, can't they give you a shot if they had the stuff? I can't believe that we have to wait till next fall to get shots for this stuff.
So just get tested, just get tested over and over and over again. They're all, you take it, do it as many times as you want.
Well, I think I'll know it if I catch the darn stuff. So I don't, so I don't get it.
Counselor Olson, we're over time. So I'd like to go ahead and adjourn the meeting so we can start the planning session. Because folks are waiting for us to get done with this meeting. They're sticking around. Let's go ahead and log out and we have to re-log back into the second link that was provided by.